So we'll get started with introductions. Well, if you could each just take a moment to give us a quick background and tell us why you were running for the county council. We'll start with Chuck.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm Chuck Green and I've been a resident of Clark County since the early 90s. In the 90s, I was the county's transportation manager, so I got involved with not just transportation, but economic development and land use planning, which since we'll bit in the news again. I also have been a consultant working for Washebele and Richfield, developing our transportation plans over the years. So I've got a pretty good feel as to the transportation issues, not just in District 2, but also within the county. My wife and I coordinate our church's relationship with Sacagawea, and that school has over 40% free of reduced-priced lunches and a number of residents who are, seem to be transient, but sometimes homeless. And obviously homelessness is, and affordable housing is also in the news nowadays, unfortunately. So I just want to thank you for the opportunity and look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Julie.
Yeah, Julie Olson. So I thought, you know, once the charter passed, I was doing a lot of work back and forth between Southern California and here, and it gave me an opportunity to kind of think about what I wanted to do. I knew I didn't want to be there. I thought maybe I'd give it a chance. But I wanted to be here. I wanted to be in Clark County. And the charter gave me an opportunity to look at a way to serve. I kind of went back on my school board experience, and I thought, you know, it was a positive experience, I think, for the community. It certainly was for me. So with the implementation of the charter, it gave me a chance to take a look at how I get re-involved in the community here in Clark County. And, you know, honestly, whether I win this race or not, it's been a great experience so far. I've met a lot of great people in this community. So no matter what, I'll continue to be involved, but I've met dozens and dozens of folks in the community, and it's been, so far, a really valuable experience, so.
Great, well, thank you. Now, we'll move on to some specific issues. I'd like to start with the Land Use and Growth Management Act. And currently, the county council is considering four alternatives for moving forward within the framework of the state growth management act. Julie, what are your thoughts on those proposals? Do you have a preference?
Well, you know, I went to most of the hearings, and I've spoken with a lot of folks about Alternative 4. The Planning Commission obviously came back with a recommendation against Alternative 4. My concern with all four is that it just simply is probably not going to withstand legal challenge, and I think that's pretty clear. What it's done is given the rural landowners in Clark County an opportunity to at least have a voice, which doesn't seem that they've had in the past. Somewhere between Alt. 1 and Alt. 4 is the answer. I do like the Planning Commission's recommendations that they look, excuse me, they look at case-by-case opportunities to help rural landowners. I think that's a good way to look at it. I'm not an expert in this area, so I don't know what those opportunities are, but I think the willingness to look at that, I think, is a valuable thing to do. Alt. 4, the other problem with it actually is that you can't, we will not be able to fund, well, we'll have to fund a 20-year capital facility if that's not adopted. It's required that we do that. So that's going to be a challenge as well. So somewhere, I kind of like Alt. 3, but again, because the cities are involved and they've had their opportunity to weigh in and ask for what they want, somewhere in these alternatives hopefully is middle ground that can withstand the hearings board and withstand legal challenge. This county has a history of growth management plan hearings problems, so it would be nice not to have to go through that process again.
Before we get off, I mean, this will be sort of like an add-on question to where you are. For, I'm assuming you're aware of the process, how Alt. 4 was conceived? What did you think? And of course, that process was essentially outside of the purview of the Planning Commission. It was Councilor Mador and somebody that he liked put this thing together. What do you think of that process?
It's not a process I would have used. I think that's probably also a challenge that, if this alternative is chosen for some reason, that will also be a challenge. I think the process is a challenge as well. It's not something that I would have done.
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't the, if you're sort of adhering to one of the purposes of the charter that was recently passed, try to move more of this kind of detailed planning work to the experts a little bit and more away from the county council? The council is a, this didn't seem to fit that pattern. Would you agree with that?
Yeah.
Chuck, do you have a preference between the alternatives?
Well, let me back up and start at the original premise of the question. I do have a preference. I actually have been on record. I attended the first of the hearings and made a statement and handed out my statement to the county council and the Planning Commission. I've been involved with every conference of plan update since the original plan was adopted in 1994. And the common thread among every single one of them, everyone has been appealed to the growth management hearings board. A number of the parts of these plans have been appealed to District and Superior Court. The last plan, the current plan, which is 2007, just got a court decision that it was compliant with the growth management act last year. So we will likely, very likely, 99% probability, it will get appealed by anybody, by somebody. So I don't think we can ever develop an appeal-proof plan. But what I do support is I support continuing the current conference of plan for two years, and that does two things that are a big, to me, a big deal. One is it does allow the county to comply with the state act, which means you'll have a plan adopted by June 30th, 2016. The current plan has 20 years' worth of growth still in it. It's not a no-action plan, which is a misnomer that some people have used. It's the current plan. It also gives the five county councillors a chance to weigh in on a preferred land use alternative. Personally, I would like to see the county take a step back and do what I call a value-based plan, which is to get the groups like friends of Clark County who have opposed Alternative 4, the Clark County Citizens United who support Alternative 4, and a variety of other groups in between to the table and give them a voice. Now, I do want to differ from Julie a little bit. I believe rural residents, there are a number of rural residents that continue to have a voice, and they don't believe they have a voice in Alternative 4. And that's the agricultural farming and resource community. And I've talked to a bunch of them since Alternative 4 was first put on the table, and they are very concerned about the loss and parcelization of rural Clark County. So the question is, what is Alternative 4 when they say it's supposed to protect the rural character? What is rural character? I think you ask 10 different people and you get 20 different ideas of what rural character is all about. And to your question, Lou, I can tell you that having been involved with all alternative conference plans since 1994, this process is very different. And to me, I think, comes very close to violating the charter's separation of powers. The reason the charter is there is to give staff the ability to use their experts, their PhDs. I mean, they've got some pretty competent staff, and they should be able to take some direction from the county council, policy direction, that can, you know, there is some flexibility to protect these property rights, some of whom I think people did lose their or had their investments impacted in 1994. Dealing with the form of the, or the character of rural land, in other words, how you develop the parcels to make them whole, at least give them some developable land, but also protect the resource lands out in the rural area. So I think, I don't agree with the process that was used. I don't agree that one out of the three votes on that preferred alternative is one that's developed the plan in the first place. There's too much of invested interest that he has.
Who's he?
The Councilor Mador has in developing that alternative and then turning around and voting on it. I fully support what the Planning Commission did. I think that's what they are appointed to do, and I think they did a darn good job doing it.
Thank you. We'll move on to another common topic around the county. What are your thoughts on the fee waiver that the county passed about two years ago now? Is it working? Is it something you would support continuing? I'm going to start with Chuck.
Excuse me, thank you. Well, two years ago, what they did was they passed the expanded fee waiver program. There was one that was adopted back in the height of the recession. This one expanded it to pretty much any non-residential development proposal. There were some goals that were established when this was first adopted. I think they were a little less defined as being quantitative and more of this is what we want. What we got was a program that has given away $10 million in developer fee waivers that's not coming back. And it's $10 million worth of road improvement dollars that somehow the road fund's going to have to make up, or the residential development community will have to make up, because the traffic from these developments isn't going to go away. It's going to need these road improvements. There was the Greg Kemsey audit, which was a national award-winning audit, that did come out and say that the program was unsustainable and had not met its goals. At that point, a year ago, had attracted all, maybe 150 jobs. I like to ground truth, and so I went and ground-truth not only Councilor Mador's claims, but I ground-truth the audit itself, and I confirmed that the audit is correct. There were not, there were not any more than 150 jobs that at that time were created. We need to look at programs to attract the middle. That's the family wage jobs. You've got a lot of the Taco Bells and the minimum wage jobs that have come in, and you've got a strong growth in that area. You've got pretty strong growth at the upper end, at the upperland professionals and CEOs. We haven't had a strong growth in the middle. That's where you get the family wage jobs. That's where I think we need to develop a program of which a targeted fee waiver is a part, but there's many more components of that program that are needed to attract these family wage jobs.
Julie?
So I would support revisiting the permit fee waiver program, simply as a practice. I think if we're going to put a program in place, we should revisit it, review it on a regular basis to see if what we want to have happen, if the results that we anticipate we're actually getting. So I would certainly support doing that right away in 2016. Again, we talked before about metrics, and I'd also like to see some more solid metrics around the program. We can see what job growth is happening, what's occurring in Clark County right now, but can we directly relate that to this permit fee waiver program? That's the question. And I think certainly that's where some people want to connect it. I'm not sure there's a reasonable connection there, direct connection there. But I also have been out talking to small business owners in the community over the last couple of months, and that permit fee waiver program has been pretty significant for them. Those dollars for them are significantly meaningful for growth and for new business opportunities. That's a barrier of growth for small business that is meaningful. Whether Walmart or a large chain needs a permit fee waiver, I think that can be argued. But I might, you know, like to look at it in terms of a small business or entrepreneurial-type fee waiver program so that we can encourage small business here to grow and develop. The other part about looking at the fee waiver program in general is, you know, are we looking at the jobs in the cities versus the jobs in the counties? Has that growth ratio changed since the waiver program came into effect? So I know that number's out there. I haven't looked at it yet, but it'd be something that I would want to look at, to see if there has been a change pre-program to the ratio of jobs in cities, the growth there versus the growth in the counties. So I'd like to look at all those things, and let's build a program that's meaningful and gives us the results that we want.
So just so that I'm clear, when you just mentioned the growth in the cities versus the growth in the unincorporated areas, are you saying that some of these results that are being touted specifically by Councilor Mador might be growth that the county fee waiver program really didn't have anything to do with? That it's growth within the cities that essentially he's taking credit for? And you want to check to see where that is?
Yeah. I just want to be honest about the numbers, yeah.
Right.
And so I want to make sure that when we make statements about the impact of the program, the effect of the program, that it's accurate.
Right. Did you read Greg?
I did, yeah.
What did you think of that?
Again, it's about metrics. I think it wasn't all, you know, there's been some challenge to Greg's report, to Greg's audit as well. And to be perfectly honest, I like Greg, he's a friend of mine, but the award was about its style and structure. It wasn't about the actual metrics or the actual numbers of the, the actual report itself. It was about its style. So when we say in a word when we report, yes, it was, but it wasn't about the content. It was about the style of the report itself.
But what did you think of the content?
Well, I agree with a lot of the content in that he wants more metrics. Now, I don't know if I agree specifically that there was only 150 jobs created. My sense is there's more than that, but I don't know.
Now, where do you get a sense of that?
Well, just, I had some, I don't have it in front of me, so I did have some job numbers that were given to me earlier this spring, and I think they really did account for more than 150 jobs, but I don't have them with me, so. But it really was the city jobs versus county jobs.
Another big issue that has come up for the city as well as the county, and will probably will continue to grow, is affordable housing and growing homelessness. And Chuck, you touched on this earlier. What can the counties specifically do to approach that?
You want me to go first?
Go ahead.
There's a number of things. I mention it first because I'm aware and I actually helped reach out and get, attract people to, at least help financially with the Gim Village displacement. We saw that last year with Courtyard Village in Esté-Javu. We've got Gim Village up in Hazelboro experiencing the same thing. Now, there is a, and this is where it's really tough, because a lot of what you're seeing is the apartments that were built 20 and 30 years ago are now becoming in a pretty dilapidated shape. They need to be rebuilt or remodeled because it's now becoming a health hazard in some places. What do you do with the people that are living there? Well, I can tell you, if you look up the street about five blocks, I would say a number of those people are now in tents in that new tent village that we're seeing off of 13th Street, and that's becoming a pretty big deal. Now, what can the county do? I think the county needs to understand that it's not just a city Vancouver issue. There's homelessness in the unincorporated area too. Last week, the county of Walla Walla passed a pretty bold goal, and that's a goal to end homelessness by 2020. And they've got a number of goals, a number of processes that they're working on to try to do that, including working with developers, working with, streamlining some of the development processes so that you can start building actual roofs over people's heads in capacity for the homeless, and creating some financial programs to get them over that financial hump to actually get in. And that's the other thing that's causing a lot of the homeless now, homelessness now is the ability to get a credit check, get the security deposit, and actually get moved into an apartment. I think the county should really take a look at what the city of Vancouver has been doing with the homelessness task force, or the affordable housing task force. There's a number of programs that I think could be, that the city's considering, that the council for the homeless is working on, that we could look at mimicking in the unincorporated area. This is a partnership. This is not a us versus them thing, and it's not something that's coming, it's something that's here.
Before we, add-on question to that, Julie, you could use it too as an add-on question, if you don't mind. There is this sort of philosophical struggle with homelessness that goes something like It's sort of like that old baseball line, if you build it, they will come. So there is this philosophical struggle that says, potentially, the more you try to help the homeless, the more meals that you might give them, the more housing, temporary housing that you might afford them, the more services that you give them. You simply attract more homeless, and it's a never-ending cycle so that you can never keep up with the number of people that are looking for help, looking for those services. And you pit that against this idea that as a society, shouldn't we be in a position to help the helpless? Where do you land on, in those, with those two camps out there?
Do you want me to supplement my response to what Julie's?
Yes. Well, no, because I think it's separate, it's a separate answer to what Greg was saying. Where do you land? I mean, are we going to get into more of a problem by helping more?
Well, it's a good point. I want to expand on, because what I heard is not only that, but the more you give, the more they're just going to expect. It's almost like an entitlement. I'm not necessarily...
And the more people who aren't getting those kinds of services from other places will be attracted to this place that is giving more.
Well, that's why I'm concerned that it's, that the people outside the city of Vancouver think it's just a city Vancouver issue. It's a city Vancouver issue now because you're getting people coming down here because of the services that are available, and you've got Vancouver Housing Authority that's now at 100%, by the way, and you've got the council for the homeless. All of their base tends to be, or most of their base tends to be in the city of Vancouver. It doesn't necessarily mean it is just restricted to the city of Vancouver.
No, I get that. That's not the issue. My question, my question is, are we better served with tough love or nice love?
I believe in helpful love, and this is where it gets back to our churches partnership with Sacagawea. You can just give to people and they take it, and then sometimes they just continue to ask for more handouts. There are cases, and this is where I believe we have to have some compassion. There's cases where people, honestly, they're three days away from being kicked out on the street, and I'm not going to turn my back on those people. We've done that. My wife and I actually have gone down and paid a hotel because a woman and her two daughters were about ready to get kicked out on the street, just to give them another three days to find a residence. We've got the city Vancouver, or excuse me, the Vancouver School District has had a family community resource coordinator program for several years now. It's a very good program. They have money from the schools foundation they can use to help people. I'd like to see something like what Share or Open House does. I was involved with Open House several years ago when I went to Crossroads Church, and they actually work for their housing. The habitat for humanity, you don't, you aren't given a house. You are given a house where you buy your mortgage and you pay the mortgage off.
Okay, but I need to get you to my, I need to get you to an answer as opposed to...
Well, I think I'm getting to it from the point is, I don't think it's a yes or no or night and day answer. I think what you find is that, yes, it's going to, if we attack the affordable housing program full force right now, yes, it'll probably take away from other programs just because you have a finite amount of money available to serve the community. I would like to see, just not give money to a program. I would like to see something that helps people get themselves out of that homeless hole and work themselves out, so they have, they have that way to achieve something. It's a goal to achieve, and once you achieve it, it's a great feeling. I don't want to see just us throwing money down a continuous hole where it's just going to continue to pay and pay and pay, and it's not going to make the problem go well.
Julie, thoughts on affordable housing, homelessness?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we went from affordable housing to homelessness. So the first question was about affordable housing and what can the county do? Okay, so affordable housing in general seems to me like a bit of a supply and demand program or issue that we have, you know, it's market-driven as much as anything. We have a very low housing supply right now, so prices are, rents are up significantly. So maybe we look at, as a county, maybe we look at programs and opportunities to partner with builders and developers to give them incentives to build lower-income housing or more affordable housing. I mean, to go to the homeless issue, I think I'm a little bit more of the tough-love type person. Let's give people an opportunity to transition, but let's, the issue is, how do we get them to not be homeless? Have enough jobs available so that they're not homeless. Have enough housing available so that they've got a place to live that they can afford to live. And I would prefer to look at policy where we incentivize those types of things, not leave people out on the streets. I mean, there are mental health issues that need to be addressed. There are serious issues that need to be addressed, and we need to be compassionate and help those folks. But I think if you look at Portland, you'll see that the more you provide, the more will be expected, and I'm not sure that, I don't think that's the way we want to go in Portland.
Just to back up for a second, you mentioned work with developers, give them incentives to, give me an example.
Well, maybe there's a fee waiver program of some sort for developers to develop lower...
So add the fee waiver to residential?
Yeah, maybe it's targeted for affordable housing. And opportunities where the county can, and again, I'm not an expert here, so I'm just thinking in bigger terms. Let's find ways to work with our community, to work with builders, to work with charitable organizations, to build affordable housing where it makes sense.
When I asked this question the last time, I believe you both gave me answers, so I'll ask it again.
Is this the gun question or not?
It can turn into the gun twice if you don't answer the question.
As long as it's real or hypothetical, I don't know.
Oh, that's real. Not the gun.
Not the gun, okay.
Okay, so I'll start with Julie. So who are you voting for in the chair, county chair position? You said Stuart paid the first time.
I did, and she did make it through.
Right, so now who are you voting for?
So now, I'm not sure. I'm not going to answer the question. It doesn't serve, first of all, we have a private ballot. We have secret ballots here. So it doesn't serve the broader good for me to say how I'm going to weigh in on the chair race. I don't believe. I don't want, I don't want my campaign to be judged based on who I'm going to vote for in the chair race, or I want it to be based on me, on my leadership style and what I bring to the county.
Yeah, that...
And if you share your popcorn, I will join you in watching to see what happens.
Okay, well, I don't, you know, I don't, obviously, I don't buy that answer. I mean, here's the problem, here's the problem with your answer. The problem with your answer is you're running for office.
Yes.
People need to know where you stand on a lot of issues, including the people that you may or may not believe in, in terms of who you might be sitting next to in this council. You and I both know, and I don't think you would lie about this, you and I both know people are interested in who you may or may not align yourself with on this county council. And that is important. People may vote for you for you, and there is obviously nothing wrong with that and everything right with that. But they're also going to vote for people who they understand who they will or won't align with. So not answer that question, in my opinion, is to cop up.
Okay, fair enough.
And by the way, you answered it the last time, as we know it. So you didn't have that answer the last time that we spoke. And I think people will be disappointed in you not answering that question.
These people are my friends. I'll serve with whomever is elected, obviously, and look forward to it. But the challenge I have right now with this, with the whole campaign and what this question does, is it's been divisive. So it's been, it's painful to watch the relationships that are strained and pressured in this situation. It's painful to watch, and I don't want to be a part of it.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I know.
Welcome to politics. Well, let's see, Chuck, you going to do any better than that?
Last time I answered this, you called me, I was acting like a true politician, and I said, well, I was running for office, so. I will tell you, the last time I said that I was torn between Bolton and Alessandro in the primary, and when I went and talked to people around District 2, that's kind of where they were too. I'm still talking to people around the town, around District 2. I'm going house to house and ringing every doorbell, talking to anybody who'll talk with me. I don't want to, I guess I don't want to give, tell them how to vote. They're asking me the same question. I know, I've known Mark Bolton longer than I've known Mark Alessandro. I could work with both of them. I have not made up my mind because I'm still waiting for more information. I like Mark's approach from his previous ability to be chair, and I think he could step in without a learning curve. I was a little struck by Mike Alessandro's, let's dissolve Department of Environmental Services resolution. I'd like the five of us councillors to talk through as a policy discussion, the department organization of any department, but I like Mike's energy and his willingness to change things up. And so I have a slight preference for Bolton, but I'm not going to say that that's the way I'm going to vote, because I have not completed my research, because there's still six weeks' far to go in this election.
Yeah, nobody believes that answer either.
Why do you keep asking it?
Well, you know what? That's a good question, but of course, the real answer... You know what? That's, that's a good question. But of course, the real answer to that is, I keep asking the question that people won't answer because I think you guys need to get on the record as saying you're going to waffle around. And, and I think, unfortunately, you both waffle around, so there's not going to be any, any gangbreed of you guys.
Well, I guess, we, we agree.
Right, but at least we know that we've got some professional wafflers.
The, the other, I know an issue you've had as councillor-
Not professional or elected. Okay, dragon tail. Amateurs right now. Go quickly turn into a professional.
I, I do want to, I do want to respond to that because I know an issue you've had before is how certain councillors will make up their minds before they even decide to vote on something. And I think there's this IGWT resolution that was a big deal a few months ago. If we are to come out and say we absolutely want Joe Madden, Jim, Joe Madden, he's a guy who is the manager of Cubs back, if we wanted Joe Manager as chair, why, then that means that we would only, the, the public would think that we only support Joe Madden as chair. We could work with both of them. I think both Julie and I have said that. We could, we could work with both of them. We don't want to taint how people decide to vote for themselves.
Okay. That, that's good. I mean, obviously, we're not going to get an answer. I can, I can appreciate that. We may not get an answer apparently on where you stand on the elimination of the Department of Environmental Services either. Once again, you don't have to say that I'm definitely going to do it, but you can say, you know what, it makes a lot of sense to look at that. You can say the, you know, there are answers without having to give a, a, a direct answer. But people, voters want to know where you stand on things. When you waffle around on stuff, again, fortunately, you're both wafflers, so, you know, there's not going to be a big game.
Things versus people are two different things.
Okay, well, you, are you going to waffle on the-
I won't waffle on how I stand on the Department of Environmental Services issue.
Should it stay or should it go?
I'll answer the same way I answered the last time in the primary. When I worked at the county, it was known Department of Environmental Services, and the county worked fine. But I also know that there's a lot of functions that that department does. There's a lot of good people who work in that department.
They'll still do their work in that department.
I don't want to judge whether a department should exist based on the personality of its director. I don't want to violate the charter by telling the county manager how he or she, because there, you still have to make that decision about Mark McCauley when there's five councillors, whether he or she should eliminate a department or organize the executive staff. That, the charter gives the county manager that authority. And the, I believe that there's probably efficiencies to be regained by it, but I'd like to see an analysis of what happens administratively and operationally if you, if you eliminate it.
Okay. You going to take a better shot at that one?
At the eliminating DES? So if it's part of the, if we look at this whole, at the whole county and we say, look, as a county, I want to look at, and the council gives Mark McCauley direction to look at the county, find efficiencies in departments, and then find ways to consolidate. And that's one of them, then yes, we need to look at in the context of all of that. I wouldn't single it out, but in the context of looking at opportunities to consolidate the efficient, and it's one of those, then yes.
Do you think there are efficiencies to be had there in the county?
I believe there's efficiencies to be had in the county, I'm sure.
Do you think there are major efficiencies to be had in the county? Like potentially some departments going away?
I spent a little bit of time, actually quite a bit of time with Adriana Prada. She's the budget director. The county is looking at moving toward a priorities-based budgeting. So rather than department-based budgeting where the departments get their budgets and there's really no accountability in that. When we move toward a priorities-based budgeting process, then they have to be accountable for literally the programs that they're funding. And when we move to that, we have an opportunity to say, all right, as, as a board, as council, what are our priorities? What are our program priorities? And, and fund those first. And if, and if the money's not there to fund the others, then they won't be funded. So in that process, I think we'll find some efficiencies. What, can I sit here and say, right there, I know there's efficiencies to be had in this department? No, I'm not that close. I'm not that inside. But I know there are opportunities just by going through the process.
So when you're out there on the campaign trail, talking to various groups and organizations and voters, do you talk about this issue? And do you answer it that way or are you a little stronger?
No, I answer it just that way.
Just that way?
Yeah, yeah. And when I go to, I've been to, and, and this is one of the things I've done in this campaign. I, I'm trying to meet with people from all different, you know, shapes, other color, sizes, letters. And I answer the questions the same way, wherever I am.
Okay.
Julie, last time we met, it was June 30th. And one of the questions we asked you was, what was the first thing you would do if you were elected? And you said, we didn't really have an agenda. So in the last few months, has that changed?
Well, I'm not sure I have an agenda per se, except that I think we need to be an efficient service organization. And I'll do what I can to, to support policy in that regard. But the first thing, I, I have got to thinking about that, so thank you for asking me. The council, in my opinion, needs to get together and build some guiding principles, some agreements on what our priorities are as a council or the, for the county, and be able to communicate that to the county manager. So I think one of the first things that the new councils should do is sit down together, build a set of priorities, maybe a mission, vision, mission, vision and value statement as to what we're going to do as a council, and how are we going to communicate that to the managers so that it's implemented at the department level. So I think that's probably one of the biggest priorities that I would see going into 2016. But I still don't have an overriding agenda about, you know, this is where, what we're doing.
And Chuck, you did answer the question, but you basically talked about training on civil discourse, and you didn't really like the way that, that each other is treated each other. So do you want to, have you changed your mind on that? Or is that something-
Well, it's something we need to do, but I think the first thing, I have evolved. The first thing the council needs to do is develop a work plan. I think Julie was getting to that. And that's something that came out of when I had people calling me about what I thought about this resolution to dissolve the Department of Environmental Services. Before we do anything, before we drop down resolutions on dissolving departments or cutting back taxes or capping taxes part of the charter, I'd like to see us develop a concerted, what are our priorities? What are the areas we want to focus on? Because while somebody's out there, you know, campaigning by putting a resolution of the week down from the council, we have that affordable housing issue that's still going on. We've got transportation issues that aren't getting any better. We've got my wife stuck in traffic an hour and a half each way across the river. In fact, she left for a meeting at 6:30 a.m. again this week that was supposed to start at eight, and she was 10 minutes late. So that's, that is not getting any better. It's getting worse. We still have, what are we going to do to pay for meat deputies that came on board this time around because of the one-time budget savings? So all of these issues, I think the council needs some organized direction as to how we're going to approach and attack all these issues. And it can't be by flopping resolutions down the front of us. So the first thing we need to do is develop a work plan, get our priorities out there, and, and get our interest. Because there's a number, we've got five people, and I can tell you, I consider myself a pretty good knowledgeable person on transportation. I'd be willing to take that one on. Are there some areas where each of the councillors have expertise that we can maybe have them take the lead on different work plan issues?
Let's talk about, Julie, you mentioned earlier strained relationships. How would you view the county's relationship among the council and particularly with the cities and other entities throughout the region?
The relationship, the first part of the question-
Between the, between the county and the city of Vancouver and the CRDC and-
So I think it's clear those relationships are strained.
How do we improve them?
Well, I think, I've already met with Mayor Levitt. I've met with all the city mayors in the community. I've met with the Porter, Ridgefield, President Grani, Brett Grani. I'm, I'm kind of doing that already. I think that we, the way you do that is you, you sit down and you talk, you talk about what's important and what are the mutual goals that we can agree on to go forward. So what I don't like is, and maybe I'm naive, and that's okay, but why we would, as a county, want to compete with our cities. Because I really see it as one community. And the opportunity for the county to, to work in conjunction with our ports and with our cities seems to me an opportunity to, to look at the community and the county as a whole where it's a viable place that companies want to bring businesses and people want to live. So that's the way I see it. I don't, I don't know why we look like we are, or whether we are in a position where we're competing with our cities. So in order to do that, you sit down and you build relationships. And you do that one-on-one, which is what I've been doing over the last couple of months, meeting with people in the community. And it's, it matters. It's meaningful.
What do you think the main cause of that is?
I think it's people, like it always is. There's a variety of reasons, but you know, those, these things always come down to personalities and, and agendas.
Chuck, your thoughts on the county's relationship?
Yeah, I got a handout.
I have a handout. I'm saving them for later.
There's, there's a few things. One is, I handed out my endorsements because you can see there, as I made a statement last time, that my endorsements are across the board. But on there, I got endorsements from current city councillors from around the county. And so I have good working relationships with every city council in this county. Worked with them on a number of projects in the past, working with them, and some of them are the project currently. We, we are one Clark County. And in order for us to really move a Clark County forward as one, we agree purely in this respect. We've got to stop competing with each other. CRDC has some good resources to attract economic development. Our three ports all have the ability to, to purchase land that we can use for future economic developments, like industrial, its offices, whatever. All three ports have done development, are development ports. Port of Vancouver obviously does shipping as well, but Port of Ridgefield is definitely a development port, same with Port of Pampas, Washouba. My daughter works with Humane Society. And I can tell you, the, that attack on the Humane Society really soured things last year. There's no cause or reason for it. They're good people.
What a guy. Not everybody knows that.
Well, counsel, okay, well, for those who were not part of, are part of that process, last year, Councilor Mador, actually, I think it was 2013, Councilor Mador purposely held approving the renewal of the contract that the county has with the Humane Society as part of their animal control functions. And this includes spaying and neutering. We still have feral cats and wild dogs out there. It's gotten better, but it hasn't gone away. And I can tell you, we've got feral cats out in Wetland and back at our house. So they held up that until the Humane Society jumped through a number of hoops, including doing some assessments of why their costs were this way, why they pay, pay people this way, and even got into how they recruit volunteers, which, and it was just borderline absurd. The attack on C-Train and RTC is, you've got anything that has letters in their initials and they probably have attacked it. And that has not helped relationships. I think you've got two new people who are going to be coming on who are known for their ability to collaborate. And I can tell you, I've collaborated with a number of these entities on transportation projects in the past and currently. So there's also other ways to collaborate on, on other issues and bring diverging opinions to the table, not conspiracy theories. So I'm hoping that with the two new people coming in, and Jeanne Stewart, I really believe she has, I, I respect her thought process. I respect how she deliberates on things. I may not agree with how she decides on things, or what her decisions are, excuse me, but I do agree with the process she uses to get there. And she doesn't predetermine her outcome. She listens and makes this. So I think you'll have three people on that council who can balance against two who I'm not sure understand or respect the seats that they're sitting on.
Can I also add to, just to that? So the CRDC was part of your question. And I would support getting fullback on board with the CRDC as a paying member of that, of that organization. And then also, one of the multiple people that I've met with over the last number of months, and I actually have a list for you to look at, it was Stacy Grant, who's the president of Humane Society. And we had a very long, two and a half hour meeting in, to really Humane Society, and a long visit about that experience that she had at the county. So that relationship is already being established.
What would be your personal preference? Where do we go on transportation? Chuck, you have expertise in this all. Start with Julie.
Let me see that transition. You know too much, so.
He can get into weeds where I can. So, so specifically with regard to transportation, any?
What should we do with the bridge? And would that be enough to mitigate traffic that continues to get worse?
So just a couple of things on transportation. I-5, I believe is a priority.
Over a third bridge?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. So, so, okay, let's talk about bridges. So here's my thought on bridges. I, I think we have to admit that we're going to need more than one over the next 20 to 40 years. We're going to need three. I, I think honestly, we're going to need, it's just a matter of what, how we prioritize it. So as long as this doesn't take too long, it would be nice if we could get representatives together from Multnomah County, Pampas County, Washington County, Clark County, our state delegations together, and, and maybe a third party, and do just that. At least admit that we're going to need three bridges over the next 20 to 40 years. And then again, build some metrics together that prioritize which one comes first. If it's traffic studies, which I know some of these already exist, but let's update them. And then let's try to the best we can to take the politics out of it and just use data to make the decision as to what the priority should be. Personally, I've drive the I-5 bridge most, so that would be my priority. But that's kind of how, you know, how maybe that's a problem, is that it's in my interest and maybe not the larger interest. But maybe it is. I don't have the metrics. I know some exist from the CRC project, so let's look at those. And then, and then build a 20 to 30 or 40-year bridge plan so that when I'm not here and when the representatives from, from Oregon aren't here, that that plan is still in place, just like we have 20-year capital facilities plans. Let's put a plan in place that makes sense for both sides of the river long-term. So that's my bridge thought. Outside of that, the I-5 corridor from Salmon Creek to, to Woodland, the Discovery Corridor, 179th Street, that's a significant opportunity in the next 10 years to bring jobs and economic development to Clark County. And in terms of space and land use, that's where we have opportunities. So we've got the funding from the state right now for all the I-5 interchange. I've actually spoken to some of our local folks who are on the transportation committees. And given we can get our work done here, we may be able to get those funds moved up in the process, maybe before 2023, once we get our work done here. So I would support that 179th Street interchange as a priority, simply for job development and growth.
So I have another handout. But this is relevant to the transportation discussion because what this is, is our projects that I've led putting the funding together for over the years I've been in Clark County, and it's over 150 million. None of them needed tax increases, but all of them needed some type of funding partnerships, whether it was leveraging grant money, whether it's public-private partnerships with the development community. There's a couple of projects on that list where bringing in county money and developer money, we were able to move a state project forward. And that's I-205 Mill Point, the improvement that was done about 10 years ago. I fully believe that we can package a public-private partnership for improvements to 179th Street corridor because the state package is $50 million in 10 years, eight years, for that interchange. We're going to need another $20 to $30 million to do the improvements and realign a couple of side streets to get there. And you can't fund a project with fee waivers. So if you can bring $20 to $30 million to the table and guarantee you, the legislature is going to find a way to move that project forward. As far as the bridges, the river crossings are concerned, I was the lead consultant for RTC five or six years ago for the transportation corridors visioning study. We looked at additional river crossings. There were two on the west side of I-5, two on the east side of I-205. They had, they did provide a little bit of relief to their parallel interstate highways, but I can tell you, an east bridge did not do anything for I-5. Our district voted 53% against the eastbound bridge. Our district focuses the I-5 corridor, and that's from end to end and across the river, across each river, the Lewis and the Columbia. Our district focuses the I-5 corridor, and that's from end to end, and across the river, across each river, the Lewis and the Columbia.
Now, let me back up just a second, you said, an east bridge did nothing for I-5, you mean as far as reduce the traffic?
Yeah, it does not do anything to relieve traffic on I-5. And I tell you, we looked at that every which way, we modeled this, did a computer model with it as a free bridge, and it still didn't suck anything.
So what does it do?
It gets people from Camas to Troutdale, that's really what it does. And, I mean, there's, don't get me wrong, there's people that probably want to go from Camas to Troutdale, but it's not going to get somebody from Richfield to downtown Portland. The other thing is relationships. You go across the river, and if you want Oregon to be supportive of you when you take across the river, it's going to need to do two things, one is, it can't induce sprawl, because Oregon has very strong land use policies in place that, even stronger than what you have in Washington, that prevent sprawl, prohibits sprawl. The second is, it's going to have to have a mass transit component. I was invited by the same agencies that are going to be part of those approvals, that's Multnomah County, Vrecham, ODOT, Trinet, City of Portland, and Metro. I was invited to come speak to them a couple of months ago about bus rapid transit. Now, light rail, I can tell you, light rail to me is just another way to get around. I just don't think Clark County is in the right market for it right now. Maybe there will be the critical mass in the future that makes it economically feasible, but as far as this evil entity, I don't agree with that, there's, I, I don't see studies that prove that it's, it's going to bring crime, crime to Clark County, because, well, in fact, we already have crime in Clark County, so it's just another way to get around. I fully believe that bus rapid transit is a way to get us across that bridge, and have something that Oregon will approve of. CTRAN connects the light rail right now in Portland, we could do a bus rapid transit line down Highway 99 through Hazeldale, through downtown Vancouver, across that bridge, we could design a new bridge to accommodate it easily, and connect the light rail where CTRAN connects the light rail down, Delta Park, and have CTRAN operate it, have it be budget neutral, it's not going to cost CTRAN anymore to operate it, and it could still qualify for the same federal funding that a light rail line could qualify for, and takes you up into Hazeldale and possibly Salmon Creek. So, it's how you get through and keeping those relationships going, and the right people to keep, that have those relationships that I think can carry us across the river.
Great, well, thank you. Why don't you take a moment, give us your final pitch, why voters should support you in the election, and please mention any endorsements, notable endorsements, and Chuck, you gave us a list, you could mention this couple of top ones. Julie, why, why should voters support you?
Well, first of all, I did bring my handouts this time, so I do have a list of endorsements that I, that I didn't bring last time, so I brought this time. And I think they're, I, I'm proud of them, they are actually also bipartisan, with a lot of independents and a few Democrats on there, so. In addition to that, I also brought the list of people that I've met with. So, over the last couple of months, I've been meeting, like I said, with, with people from all parts of the community, people in the county, directors in the county, business leaders in the community, city mayors, city council people, business leaders. So I brought a list of those too, just so you could see just who I'm meeting with. And the purpose of meeting with these folks is to get a real sense of what's happening in Clark County. When I, when I decided to get into the race in March, the two and a half to three years prior to that, I'd really been out of politics. I was barely even watching the news for a little while, I just, after 2012, decided I need a little bit of break, so, so I just got out of it. So when I came back in, and I think that's part of why I'm the better person for this election, is that I don't bring a lot of preconceived notions with me. Everything I know, literally, I've picked up in the last six months, in terms of what's been going on here in this county. That's good or bad, I think it's good, actually. So, in meeting with these folks, I, I'm getting a real sense of what's been happening, I bring a fresh perspective to the race. I also have a history of my business experience, successful business experience, working with others to achieve results. I think that's critical as a leader, it's not, it's not always, as people say, being the tip of the spear. I think my style is more working with others to get things done, so. And I think that's kind of what our community is looking for right now, is, is electing people that not just represent our interests and our, and our ideologies, per se, but somebody who can actually work with others to accomplish things, and that's what I bring. I did that on the Richfield School Board, I've done it in my work life, and I think I can do it under county council. So, I'm going to ask for your endorsement, and I would be honored to have it.
Thank you. Chuck?
Thank you. I too will be asking for your endorsement, but I'm going to hand out something very different, we haven't, we haven't talked about this. I have a little bit, but the question to me is, what constitutes a leader? A leader doesn't always have to be the one out there telling people what to do or voting on resolutions. A leader needs to be able to listen, to collaborate, to partner, to serve. And what I'm handing out is my, my resume as far as community service. I've been involved in serving this community for 23 years, whether it's volunteering in the schools, whether it's volunteering to help schools, building community gardens, or other charitable activities. I think the true ability of a leader is to understand what's going on in the community, and talking, talking with other city council people, talking with county staff is great, I've done that too, but also, there's, there's more than just county staff and elected officials that live in this county. It's just the average citizen is just trying to make ends meet. There's the people who in Gem Village who are ready to get displaced out on the street, how, how do you help them? And there's ways that some people have been doing to, to try to help them immediately. So it's the ability to pull all of these together to understand how everything, everyday life in this county functions, I think is a true definition of a leader. I, I've handed out my collaboration and funding partnership history and resume in the county. I also organized the Where Have All the Voters Gone forum back in April. I pulled 120 people from across the political spectrum and across the everyday spectrum to talk about how we can get people back to the ballot box. So, people can talk about collaborating, people can talk about partnerships. I can bring you experience, not only in serving the community, but also reaching across political differences and getting successful programs, events, and projects pulled on. And so I'm asking for your endorsement for this position because of my ability across the board to lead District Two.
Great, well, thank you, thanks to both of you for joining us. Good job.